We good? Okay, welcome to our public hearing tonight and our city council meeting. It's Thursday, August seventh at seven P. M. Glad to have everybody here tonight. And we also have YouTube Live, so we have a few things going with YouTube, and you may hear from a few people on YouTube as well. They've allowed that. So one, one other thing, we'll dispense with the roll call tonight. However, I want you to know that Councilman Meacham is on Zoom tonight, so he is a part of this meeting and will take part as we move forward. So we are ready to get underway. Would anyone like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Okay, oh, thank you, Rose.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of no doubt, indivisible, with which justice for all.
Thank you. Art, would you lead us in a thought or a prayer?
Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to gather as a community and as city council and mayor. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy and for the pleasant community that we live in. And we invite thee to be with us this night and watch over us and help us remember civility and, and help us to remember that we are neighbors and friends and we all desire the, the best for our entire community. We give thee thanks for all that thou has blessed us with and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Art. Tonight's meeting is a little bit different than other meetings. This is a public hearing that's held right off the bat. Under state law, we hold a public hearing. We have a chance to, to hear from the pu- public on what has been published and sent pretty much to every household. So then we move into the business. The business of the night is the adoption of resolutions. There are about six items that we go through afterwards. There is no other business, no other things that come up in this whole meeting. That's because of the truth in taxation laws, this is the way that it has to be handled. So we will follow that and we'll just jump right into it. So what I would call for is a motion to move to a formal public hearing for the proposed property tax increase.
So moved. Do we need to do a declaration?
Well, we could.
I don't have any, I just.
Do you have a declaration of, of, of a potential conflict?
Just making sure we go through all the points.
Yeah. Any, does anyone?
No.
No.
I, I didn't think we did at this point. Yeah, that's okay. All right. So none of you have a potential conflict in this? That's good to hear. So I need a motion. I've had a motion for the public hearing. I need a second.
A second.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
We're having technical difficulties. But we can still move forward.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, you'll hear that voice come out of, out of the speakers, I guess. So I have a signed list. I guess all of you that signed this public hearing, you'd be given a chance to talk. And so I'm gonna just go down the list. So we want to make sure that we listen to you if you have something you want to say. And we will move forward. So I'll call your name. First is Burke Terry.
How are you tonight?
Good.
I just, I'm questioning on this tax deal again. I mean, it just keeps, every year, it's like we keep adding more and more. We've got more businesses in town. We've got more tax revenue. And I know it's only two dollars and whatever cents a month, but it all adds up eventually. And then it never goes away. And I, and I'm just, I'm just so furious because you raised the taxes was last year, the year before, we, the property taxes again. This is the second time in three years you've done it. And I'm, I'm totally against it. I, I mean, it's two dollars. I mean, we have to live within our budget. Why can't you? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next is Clyde Holm.
Good evening. I feel just about like Burke. We, we go to these meetings. We've went to the county ones. We've went to the Santaquin City ones. We've went to other cities where we lived before. We've always felt it was our patriotic duty to support the community. But I'm tired of this every time. There's no time that you don't ever lower taxes. Everything goes up. I wish my social security went up as well as you guys' taxes go up. We just can't afford this. And it, and it doesn't do any good to say anything because you've already basically got the adoption already made. You know that and I know it. But that's my feeling anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Keel? Kylie Keel? Okay. Kaylee Keel? Jackie Larson?
Hello, so I'm actually from Spanish Fork. My dad lives here in town, so I'm here just on his behalf, trying to understand what's going on. I do agree with the two gentlemen before me. Also curious, was there another presentation or thing before this? Because I do see that the public hearing followed by the resolution. So kind of support what the last gentleman said is, does it matter what anybody kind of says at this point? That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Dale Summerhaze?
I didn't see the list. I don't know how you got my name. That's good.
Did you write it on there?
Oh, yeah, okay.
I got it.
Oh, okay. I thought that was just who was here, not who was gonna speak. But anyway.
Well, you signed up, so.
Here I am.
We're glad to have you.
Glad to be here. Few comments. In twenty twenty-three, as you know, the city of Santaquin approved itself a staggering property tax increase, which hovered around the fifty percent mark. And part of the reason for that increase was the need for two new police vehicles. Am I right on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody remember how much was allocated for those police cars? Ballpark figure, anything?
Not off the top of my head.
All right.
But, but they are audited.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah.
I would propose we use the number seventy thousand per car since patrol cars can cost as much as hundred and sixteen thousand. So I think a conservative figure would probably be around the seventy thousand dollar mark. But per Utah property tax code, taxing entities are guaranteed the same revenue that they received in the previous year. That means that the city is receiving at the seventy thousand dollar mark, a hundred and forty thousand dollars each year to purchase two new vehicles. I doubt that the city is purchasing two vehicles every year. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. But you're getting money for that because the, as the gentleman mentioned, taxes don't go down because the entities are guaranteed what they got in the previous year. Seems to me that the city has a substantial windfall of funds each year that could be used to cover the current needs required for the library, police, and fire departments. Because that money for those vehicles is coming in every year. And so I would simply propose that the city use the windfall funds to finance the current relevant costs instead of asking property owners to fund the needs through more property taxes. The money's there. It's coming, gentlemen, it's coming in every year. Hundred and forty thousand dollars. I think we could use that money for our current needs instead of asking the property taxpayers to pay more. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Wayne Robbins?
I'm good, I just agree with what everything.
Okay. Thank you. Rose Larson? Okay.
I'm grateful for the opportunity in this meeting to share some of my thoughts and observations that I have had as I follow the city meetings on YouTube. Tonight, we're here talking about a tax raise on the property in Santaquin. And I watched the city council work session that occurred on July fifteenth, which has common things of what we're talking about tonight. We were all lectured by the mayor on how the city's expenses can't be met by impact fees alone. I agree, but I think the city falls short on getting other forms of revenue that are available. The city has said many times that they are business friendly, but have not shown that by their thoughts and actions. The Main Street commercial area has very few houses that are owner occupied and is becoming rundown and won't reflect what the city wants their most seen area to look like in just a short time. Going back to the meeting I referred to earlier, the council lightly discussed two businesses that want to come to Santaquin. One was an RV park for short stays that is on Lewis Fields Ranch, which is a mile and three quarters north of Main Street on Highway nine, one ninety-eight. The other was also an agri tourism business of Cherry Hills, and they were feeling, feeling out what the city might allow. Instead of being welcoming and having the attitude of how we can make this happen, the council expressed their fears of what they might become too successful and then might cause too much impact upon the city. Nothing is going to impact the city more than the Graycliffs gravel pit already has, both as an eyesore and a safety hazard, with the dust and the mud and the slow trucks entering and exiting the highway slowing the traffic. In city meetings, Councilman Adcock has asked more than once if the city received any revenue from the gravel pit, but the only answer he gets is reasons why they haven't. On July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the city council meeting, Councillor Adcock also inquired what the status is with the Graycliffs development. Manager Beagle indicated that phasing plans are moving forward and will likely come to the city in the coming weeks for review at a development review committee meeting. Councillor Adcock inquired if the city is receiving any sales tax for the grading from Graycliffs Development. Manager Beagle indicated the city is not currently receiving any numerication, renumeration for the mass grading gravel, gravel operations as the sales office is not located in Santaquin. Councillor Adcock expects his concern for the building of homes on that specific location. One of the city's requirements for the renewal of their permit in March of two thousand and twenty-four, according to memorandum sent by, to the mayor and the city council from Megan Wilson, one of them is marketing of materials, maintain a sales office onsite, and maintain a current Santaquin City business license. And for the things that have been done, it says the project has a current business license. As you can read on the paper, SNL Inc., or Graycliffs Sand and Gravel, was to have an office onsite, which they do, still don't seem to have, which is listed as a requirement for the permit renewal, which requirements were passed by the city council on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, which if they complied, would have forced them to pay the city sales tax on materials marketed. I personally contacted Genola City, and they informed me that they received donation royalty payments from the Kegley Quarry, equalling a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and two dollars and eighty-eight cents from seven twenty-two, twenty-four through four twenty-one, twenty-five. I don't think that Staker Parsons would do that if it wasn't a fairly standard practice. A number of years ago, a company wanted to open the same gravel pit that is now Graycliffs, and they offered Santaquin City royalties and baseball fields. While you're at it, the city might wanna check and see if the Sun Rock Santaquin gravel pit should be paying the city something. If good business practices and more restraint were used more often by the city, you wouldn't have to raise the taxes as often as you have been. And I thank you for the work that you have accomplished, but I think there's just more, more sales tax opportunities available and, and other resources that the city has at their disposal right now that could be pursued and used to help run the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose, did you want to add?
Okay, thank you for giving me a chance to speak tonight. And thank you all for your service. I know it's a lot of work. Okay, I just wanna add a little bit. I Googled in Utah, how sales tax collected from a gravel pit. Says this is an AI overview. In Utah, sales tax collected from a gravel pit is distributed to county, counties, cities, and towns based on where the sand and gravel extraction site is located. Here's how it generally works. Collection: The gravel pit operator, the seller, is responsible for collecting the sales tax from the buyer, the customer. Remittance: The collected sales tax is then remitted to the Utah State Tax Commission. Distribution: The Utah State Tax Commission distributes the revenue from the sand and gravel sales tax to the relevant counties, cities, or towns based on the proportion of the extraction site located within jurisdictions' boundaries. Use of revenue: The revenue distributed to the counties, cities, or towns from the sand and gravel sales tax must be used for Class B or Class C roads. This specific allocation is mandated by Utah law and ensures the local communities directly benefit from the revenue generated by gravel pit operations within their jurisdictions, specifically, sorry, that's a hard one for me, for road maintenance and improvements. AI overview, I asked, what, what is the gravel pit operator? A gravel pit operator is responsible for overseeing the extraction, processing, and transportation of gravel and other agriites from a pit or quarry. They operate heavy machinery, ensure safety protocols are followed, and maintain equipment and coordinate with the other workers. And then it gets, goes on to say they operate the heavy machinery, material processing, safety compliance, equipment maintenance, and coordination. What else? I had so many papers today and we were in a rush, so. Anyway, I find that we have a little bit of overspending and wasting of money, in my opinion. And then we have a problem with trying to get commercial going, mostly agricultural tourism. Number one, on the new Bike Skills Park, Prospector's View Park, in the city work session meeting held on October third, two thousand and twenty-three, item number two on the agenda, Bike Skills Park Design Update and Discussion, City Manager Bigley and Community Services Director Bradley presented the concept design for a new Bike Skills Park at Prospector's View Park. And Director Bradley expressed that he is confident the city will be able to apply for and receive grants in order to pay for the installation of the park. He indicated the total cost of the Bike Skills Park is estimated at two hundred and ten thousand. Council members discussed the importance of installing cameras or other types of security at the trail systems to protect the city. City manager added that the city is looking for security, looking at security concerns at the park and what will be the best moving forward. City and staff and council members also discussed how the park will be insured. In the regular Santaquin City Council meeting on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, item number eight on the agenda, just fourteen days later, number eight, discussion of possible action. The Bike Skills Park Design Update and Contract Award Mayor Olson presented, the contract bid amount presented for three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-one cents for the entire project. Okay, should I read it all?
Whatever you want.
Manager Bigley stated that some of the costs may be covered by grant money as well as the city performing some of the excavation and groundwork in kind. The mayor, council, and staff discussed how the bid amount changed since it was last discussed in a work session due to the needed excavation and groundwork being completed either by the ramp company versus the city completing it on its own. Councillor Montoya asked what would happen if the city doesn't have the ability to complete the groundwork ourselves. Manager Bigley indicated that he's confident with the specifications and information received just today from the ramp company that the city can complete a portion, about half of the groundwork, and leave the technical and advanced work to American Ramp Company. Councillor Montoya expressed her concern that the project is done right and how the current contract was presented to the council members. Councillor Adcock expressed his concern for safety on the Kingan Road once it's open to the public again. Mayor Olson spoke of the opportunity, the park, the bike park, gives to all people of all abilities. He was impressed with the experience he had meeting a disabled individual who will be able to use the trail with their specialized equipment. I just wanna say that not mu, not all disabled people have specialized equipment. Councillor Montoya inquired if the city had funds to cover the project if grant funds are not awarded. Manager Bigley indicated the city council could choose to use available impact fees funds or not complete the project at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-four. Should the city not receive grant monies, Councillor Sidaway made a motion to approve the award of the contract with American Ramp Company not to exceed three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Direct staff to pursue a fifty percent grant from the out, Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant and to utilize volunteers and other fund sources to reduce the amount of funds needed for the project. Councillor Hathaway seconded the motion. Councillor Adcock, yes, well, Councillor Hathaway, yes. Councillor Meacham, yes. Councillor Montoya, yes. And Councillor Sidaway, yes. My question here is, did we receive grant monies from the Utah Outdoor Recreation for the Bike Park? Bike Park Grant? Skills Bike Park?
No, Skills Park. It's, it's different thing than, it's not the Bike Park, it's a Skills Park, yes. Yeah, we did.
Okay. I was unable to find grants awarded to the Santaquin City for this project on the Utah Outdoor Recreation Site, so I couldn't pull it up. So I couldn't see it. So that was my answer, question, and you answered that. How much grants did you get, receive for that?
I, I don't know.
It was the fifty percent, wasn't it?
Roughly two hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah.
And that came from them?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And were all the questions concerning the cameras and insurance solved?
There are cameras installed currently.
Was that part of the total cost?
Yes.
Okay, another question. What are the extra costs for the Bike Skills Park yearly for the city?
We haven't spent anything else because it's, it's different than the Bike Park yet at the Bike Park. This is the turns and the ramps and the jumps and things. We, we're looking at, I wanna say thirteen thousand dollars of rap tax that had been awarded from the committee to go towards resurfacing so that it made it safer for the kids. But it's, it's a different thing. Rap tax is recreation arts and parks.
Uh-huh, I see that on your chart that you're, and you give the percentage, and I figured that out, about you're getting, receiving about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand?
I don't know.
Sounds about right. Might be a little higher than that.
I was also amazed at how quickly this project moved forward. Concept design was presented October third and approved the award of a contract with American Ramp Company October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. City approved the spending of the three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one and seventy-one cents in fourteen days from the time of the consent plan for the Bike Skills Park that was discussed at a cost of two hundred and ten. And I said hopefully paid with, for with a grant. My opinion, the majority of the Santaquin City residents will or have no plans to use this Bike Skills Park, and it was a waste of money. Number two was the food trucks, and this was in September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the regular city council members meeting. Number three, food truck discussion. Mayor Olson presented to members of the council a recent request he received from a local vendor who asked to operate a food truck at the city park. Assistant Manager Bond addressed the possibility of the council allowing food trucks to be located at the city park on a regular basis. He went on, went over state code with, with states that municipalities may not limit food trucks or mobile businesses in commercial zones, limited locations of food trucks close to restaurants, restrict operating hours of days of food. But what I'm trying to get up, onto this one, I don't know how much time was spent by the staff to just look up the food trucks, but I couldn't see any benefit the city was going to get by spending so much time looking into food trucks for the city park. Were any food trucks, after all that time was spent on that, did any food trucks come and spend any time at the park?
Good.
During the day, not at any event.
Oh, in fact, I thought there, so yeah.
Okay. So was that weekly?
Office students are there once a week typically right now.
Yep.
Office student party.
Okay. But I don't know how much money was spent on trying to figure out how a business, a food truck, a portable business, how they could come into your town to make a profit. So that was a thing that I thought, that was my opinion. I don't know how much is, I'm, was running out of time to throw this all together, but I know that the city does some consultation fees, pays consultation fees for proposed projects in the city. And sometimes they, you end up paying and doing the projects, and sometimes you don't. But a lot of times, it's just wasted money. And, and the agricultural tourism, this is money that could be, you know, brought in to the city. The farmers and orchard men were told by the city that they would like to see tourism agricultural as part of our economic for the city. I just presented, and the city does not know if it's too successful, what we can accept, okay? I watched and they talked about, you brought up the outfit that had ran for years and it had a Ferris wheel and da, 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 and all this, and it was just off the interstate, you could see it and all this. And yes, they were very successful. But I'm looking at these guys, these farmers, orchard men, that are trying to come up with the ideas what, how to bring agricultural tourism into the city. And this has been brought up, and we went to, oh, meetings, probably. And we went to, oh, meetings, probably, it was before you guys were put in, but some of you probably were on the council. And with the charts and how we were going to have it all arranged and how we hopefully would cap this and that, and this would be our running, how we could make some tax money in this city through tourism, agricultural tourism. But just as, excuse me, and just as was discussed in July meetings, when they bring their ideas, ideas forward to you guys, you're not even ready for our agricultural tourism. Yet I hear that, uh, the train that, um,
Rowley's.
Red Barn has just built, it is just a temporary permit. That's a shame because how much money have they invested in that? And, and as far as that, um, RV park that would be down on the Louis Fields property, that is so far away, and it, you have their agricultural around it, and if they still had the ranch going on, and they're, what they're encouraging is, from what I listened to, was when they have these ranching, when they have these rodeos and stuff, it gives people places to park. They're always traveling all over the nation. I mean, they spend thousands of millions of dollars on their horses, their trailers, their, I mean, it is not a poor community, you know? The rodeo community is not a poor community, it's a money-making community. But you're not even ready, so it's kind of a slap in the face for them to come and present their ideas to you guys. And it's been years that you asked them to do this, and you're not even ready, and you don't know even what you want in agricultural tourism. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Patrice?
I thought I was just signing up that I was here, not to speak, but I have lots and lots of things to talk about. Number one, Dennis wondered, the food truck is, are they referring to the one that serves lunch?
All food trucks are covered under state law. We don't even have to have a business permit from them. They are, if they're from out of town, then by state law, they can drive onto a city street and sell.
Wow.
And we have no control, no sales tax, that's state law, and that's how a lot of this goes, so go ahead.
Well, my problem was with Great Cliffs also. That is a shame. Day by day, we see our mountain turning into the biggest eyesore ever. You go out on West Mountain, and the first thing you see in Santaquin is that ugly mess. Then we drive through and we get our clean cars, dirty, muddy, slick, wet rocks. Sometimes there's almost accidents there because those trucks are coming and going and coming and going, and those big trucks are coming through our city streets. They've learned to go around, they've learned how to cut through the neighborhoods to save time, and it's ridiculous. The other thing is our property taxes are so high now, we can't afford it. When my friends and my in-laws and people in Payson, Salem, they hear our taxes compared to their property taxes, they're astounded, they're like, you pay that much? Yep. And the thing of it is, I'm trying to sell my house right now, and I should have, if I was prepared to speak, I would have brought you the letters, two letters that said, if we could pick your house and move it up someplace else, we would, but with this town and this neighborhood, no, thank you. So I've contacted Jeff, he's been so good to help me. Why can't you clean up our neighborhoods? There was an eyesore at Bot's until the city celebration. Wow, that got cleaned up. They had a motor home, they had a dog pen, they had trash bikes, it was awful. Here comes city days, and it's all cleaned up. Why can't they clean up my neighborhood? Some of my neighbors have nine cars, they park on the streets. One time, there was a purple dresser that sat there for two years. The realtor on my house says, if I can get the buyers to come in this way and not go west, we're okay. They see it that way, and they want nothing to do with it. There, it's a mess. Cars, garbage, they park on the lawn, some of the houses don't even have windows. And I know we can't control how people live. Some people are having two and three trailers in the backyard with people living in them, and I understand that is because of the economy. Our kids can't afford rent, but in the meantime, they chain up pit bulls and all these barking dogs. In my backyard, we have fifteen dogs, and I have three of them. They do bark, but it's because we have so many and no control, no laws, no punishments. What can we do to clean up our city? I don't know if everybody agrees.
I do have an answer, and I would love to visit with you on that one.
I tried to get you to before, and you said you and President Morgan had a plan, and I've been so excited. We keep waiting and waiting. The North End is awful, we don't have it like Summit Ridge. A lot of my people, my friends up there, they don't even see it because they get on the freeway and they go out of town. I'm like, come on to my house, let me show you what's in the North End of town. And I love Santaquin, I'm from Santaquin, but I'd love to move out of it right now.
It is already kicked off, it's a program, it's underway.
Yeah, I love it.
It's called my hometown, Santaquin, and it's, has hundreds of people that have been meeting just this past week, so.
Good.
Okay.
I would love it because it's not fair, you know what I mean? You can't control a lot of things, but we used to have a councilman, and y'all know who he was. He would ride around and take notes, he'd get the police chief, and by dang, their yards were cleaned up and it looked nice again. And as far as everything else, I agree with everybody else. I'm really disappointed right now with Santaquin. Sorry, but thank you for all that you guys do.
I'm not sure I want to say thank you for that, but thanks for speaking.
Okay.
Dan?
Hi. Uh, I'm a longtime resident. I've got some concerns, and I think the residents here in, in town would be more than glad to see a tax increase. But one thing, and I'm speaking for a lot of old-time residents that live down in my neighborhood, the city council needs to take address the dust that that gravel pit's putting off. We need to get some monitors, we need to get MSHA involved, it's a health hazard. I've worked in dusty places, I worked for Redmond Minerals, I worked at Geneva, I worked for Ash Grove Cement. That, that gravel pit is putting off more dust than what should be allowed by far. And, uh, another thing like Patrice said, uh, this city is, I mean, how many cars is allowed, are you allowed to park on city property? Just in front of houses, trailers, cars, couches? I mean, the end of, this end of town, it looks like a little Tijuana. Another thing I'd like to address that, that needs to be addressed with taxpayer money, Center Street. Going down north on Center Street, before you get to the tracks, there's only sidewalk on one side of the road, the other side's asphalt, there's no curb and gutter. When they turn the sprinkler on, the water runs all the way from the south end of that development all the way down to the canal. You should see how much water's wasted right there. Another thing I think we need to address with this tax increase is all these developments on the North End of town. Go down there and look at each development they built, then the next one, and the next one. The roads don't even line up, you kidding me? Goes like this, and then a big jog, and then a dead end, and a cul-de-sac, it's like, it's like a maze. I mean, city engineer, who's in charge of, who's in charge of these developments? I mean, it's crazy that, I mean, I'm just a stupid carpenter and miller. I can see that's one big mistake, but I think more than anything, and I'm concerned because I have asthma, and we go out back on the patio in the morning, we get up at six o'clock in the morning, we go out on the patio and we have coffee, and when that sun rays starts coming up over the springway, you can just see that dust, and I feel sorry for those people on that bench because in the morning, the prevailing winds comes from the north and kind of comes across the bench like that, like strings and those over there, they're getting dusted by it. Every, every day, we blow that patio off with a blower on our yard. It's, I mean, you would not believe the dust that that gravel pit's putting off, and it's, uh, like I say, I've worked at gravel pits, I've worked in dusty places, they're breaking the law, and it's not good for the cities, it's not good for our health, we need to address that soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, did you want to say something?
You guys know me, so I want to turn around and face them so they can understand a little bit about this, if that's okay.
Turn the microphone around. I don't care if I see the backside.
You got my good side, Dan. Um, so I'm a citizen here, and I want you to know that this tax increase isn't something that I take lightly. I have four different pieces of property between my home, um, one that my daughter's going to be living in, and one that's a future investment for a home. I pay four times for this. Um, as your fire chief, I can tell you the struggle it takes to get volunteer firefighters to serve our community. Volunteerism is dead. We had to move to start paying our individuals to work in our community, and even then, I struggle to keep volunteer or part-time firefighters in the station who could make more at Chick-fil-A, Portin' and Out. A paramedic with a bachelor's degree, full-time firefighter, paramedic, starts in our department at eighteen to twenty dollars an hour. They're risking their lives for that. I can speak not only as the fire chief, but I can speak as a customer, what that time difference means. January one, two thousand twenty-five, we started staffing three people in the station twenty-four seven to reduce your response times so that when you call nine-one-one, that ambulance can be to your house in Santaquin City within seven minutes. We have three people at night. If there's a fire, we're still relying on people that come from home, get up, who do not make it to the station until nine minutes into it, and then it's a seven-minute mark. So you're now fifteen to eighteen minutes before they even get to your home. Time is muscle, I don't know if you've ever heard that in the medical field, but if you're having a, a heart attack, a blockage, or a stroke, the longer you go without oxygen to the heart or to the brain, the more damage you have. The faster we can get there, the faster we can start medications to improve you. April twenty-fifth of this year, I can tell you as a customer what it meant to have a fire department staffed with five people during the day that provided an ambulance and a fire engine. And that started in Genoa when I was picking up bees as a beekeeper, picking up a swarm of bees. I got stung multiple times and went into full-blown anaphylactic shock. If my daughter wasn't with me, I would be dead. I couldn't even administer my own EpiPen. She brought me to and called the ambulance, had them meet us at the state road shed. The time she got there, the smoker and the back of my truck had tipped over and caught the bed in my truck on fire. Luckily, that day, we had five members, an engine and an ambulance. I was transported to the hospital where I received more medications and luckily survived. I can tell you the day before or the day after, I would have lost a truck and probably the state road shed because that's where my daughter pulled in. I can tell you this weekend alone, the busiest weekend of Santaquin with all the people from out of town coming in, my normal staffing of five, I had two. I had two people. So this property tax increase hits me in the pocket, I'm a single income. It hits me in the pocket, but it provides the best service. It is going to provide me one extra guy to help do the job that is required, not only to respond on calls, but to do the yearly business inspections, to go out and work with contractors, to get businesses here and get them through all their testing. You talk about how do we clean up the neighborhood? How do we help get that stuff done? Well, that other part of that is to help fund a full-time officer. Their standard average, uh, number of officers is one, one per one thousand. If you take Santaquin, we have roughly, let's just say twenty thousand people, we're seven officers short. We have thirteen or fourteen officers right now. They're running call to call to call, they don't have time to go out and be proactive. I don't have time to go out and do weed inspections when I, as the fire chief, are trying to do my, the day job and run on ambulance calls to make sure that the city, or the city is covered. So I get your pain, I feel your pain, but I also want you to know there's a different side to that. Has anybody in here ever called nine-one-one? I can tell you, there was an individual who was one hundred percent against taxes years ago. Great guy is no longer alive, and he was one hundred percent against these things until his wife suffered cardiac arrest, he saw, and then he was all understanding. So just think, when you call nine-one-one, what is the level of service you expect from the fire department, from the police department? Are you okay waiting twenty minutes for an ambulance to come? Because if no one is staffing Santaquin, that closest ambulance is coming from Payson if they have one available. So I'm happy to discuss this offline with anybody and show you staffing, show you call-response times, those types of things, but I think you need to understand what it really means and how it's going to impact everybody. One thing that insurance rates, what a lot of people don't understand is what they call the ISO, the Insurance Service Office, rates the city based on fire. They do a yearly study, or it's actually every four years, they come in, they look at dispatch requirements, they look at training hours, they look at water supply, they look at a whole bunch of stuff, and then they give us a rating. Right now, we're what we call a four, four Y. A rating of four, one being the lowest in the best insurance rates in the industry, nine being the worst. We are a four, four Y. The Y covers areas outside the area that we provide that doesn't have fire hydrants in it. It's a little bit higher. The more people we can get, the lower we go, that also helps draw in these commercial businesses. When I get called from a developer looking to come and bring a business, and they find out I'm a four, and they can go to Payson and get a three, that impacts their commercial insurance rates and your personal insurance rates. So it's not just about how do we clean up the city, there is a big impact, so. Sure.
Last tax increase went to, there's supposedly increase in the wages of these people. It was over five hundred thousand dollars, the revenue was coming in. Where did that money go if you're having a hard time getting people to pay my expense?
I, I can tell you that took a firefighter from fifteen dollars an hour starting to seventeen dollars an hour, and from a paramedic starting at seventeen to nineteen dollars an hour.
You don't have many people there, so I, I don't understand where the money's going.
It's being used, it, it's being used. We are using it effectively, but it's also hard to keep people here. Santaquin pays their part-time paramedic twenty to twenty-one dollars an hour to start when other agencies are paying thirty dollars an hour. So it's hard for me to compete with those. Part-time law enforcement, we pay our part-time law enforcement officers thirty-three dollars an hour. Pleasant Grove is starting at forty, and so the pool goes down of people that we have the opportunity to pull from. So I'm happy to show you offline, you can come visit me, and I'll show you anything you want to, that, that's, it's open. I have nothing to hide, and I, and I think the more you can get educated and see this and understand how it truly impacts, the better you might feel. You had a question, sir?
How much, about eight percent, how much you rather maybe operate?
Eight percent?
Uh-huh.
Eight percent increase?
Hundred, hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
And that funds half of a fire, full-time firefighter. Currently in your fire department, I am the only full-time guy. Everybody else is considered part-time, which means I can only work them up to twenty-eight hours.
Which one is one with fire department?
Half of it will fund a full-time position for the fire department, some of it will fund a full-time position for the police department, and some will fund a part-time position in the library.
Police department's overpaid.
I can tell you that.
They deserve more.
Yeah, as, I, I'm a, I'm a sworn law enforcement officer too, and I know I've been doing this for almost thirty years now. I came from Provo, I spent almost twenty-four years working in Provo. I came here because I love this community, and I wanted to help this community grow in the right direction and be proactive instead of reactive. So like you say, you, you can come visit me at the station anytime, I'm, I'm happy to sit down, no matter what I'm doing, and go over things with you, and let you actually see and ask questions. Yes, ma'am?
Sure.
But we've heard the city office was, the city building was supposed to cost this much, and it's still not done because they meant all the budget, meant all the budget.
I couldn't answer that, I, I worry about my circus and my monkeys in the fire department. So I, I tried to stay in my lane there, I couldn't tell you.
This sum of that money would have helped the other departments too, apart from the city building, it wouldn't have cost so much money. The seniors would promise the building too, and guess what? We have to share it, we can't even have our stuff set out, they have to clean it all up and put it away. We don't even have a team to do it.
I, I, I sympathize with that. The fire station was built in two thousand and six, which was supposed to be a public safety building. Right now, we're sharing it between police, fire, and courts, and for a long time, we shared it with the city when they moved in. And we still don't have enough for them, so we have to do the best we can, but we're also trying to stay within the means as well, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Um, that, that is all, the names we have, do we have someone on Zoom that wants to talk?
There's, there's nobody on the online meeting.
Okay, is, uh?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get Lynn back on, he just dropped off, and so let me get him back on, on the, on the FaceTime.
Do you want to participate?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Sure, come on up. Sure. Come on up. You gotta state your name. This is out of the limits of the usual, but you're welcome to speak.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jackson Jensen. I just, so I work at Rowley's Red Barn. I'm not here on official stuff. I'm here for a merit badge. But I just wanted to comment. I don't know how their permit for their whole train thing works. And if this limited thing is not as good as that other lady made it sound. But I do want to say that I know a lot of them, and I've been watching them work really hard. They're working, you know, day and night, trying to get this thing up and running. And they bring a lot of money and revenue into our town. So I just wanted to say that we should try and give back to them, because they do do a lot for us. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate everything that everybody has added in here. I have a million things I want to say. However, this is a public forum, and we need to close it and move on. However, well, let's do that first. So I need a motion to adjourn from the public forum.
Public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from a formal public hearing.
Is there a second? Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Thank you. I know that's uncomfortable, and this might be a little bit out of the ordinary, because in the past, they just moved on straight into business. But I did want to say a few things. And there's times where people say, "Well, the mayor said this," or "The mayor did this," or, you know, "So the mayor's gonna do this." I would like to just answer a couple of things as we go through this. Understanding taxes and the way that the taxes are levied back to us is a whole different ball of wax than what you understand as you just look at it and obviously would be like any other citizen and go, "Well, you brought in some more businesses. You brought in some more houses. There's more taxes." Guess what? The reason that tax levy is changed all the time, if they don't have truth in taxation, because this was pushed by the citizens of the state and by legislature, that the way that the mill levy works is so that you keep that same dollar figure when you set the tax. So, it's been three years ago when we started this, two years ago when we passed it, and we had to go because it had been twelve years since they had addressed any kind of a tax increase. And what happens over each year if inflation hits or cost of living in any other way? Well, tough. You get the same dollar amount from when that tax increase was passed a year, two years ago, whatever. Really, there's one portion of this, we're trying to just keep up with the inflated times. We're trying to figure out how we can do this without trying to come up with another debt, or even wait another year and go, geez, we're gonna have to raise the taxes to even allow us to cover our police, to cover our fire, and to add a little more to the library. That's all this is doing. And if you think about it, we all have to give up one big gulp a month in order to cover this this time. And it may change if we don't address these kinds of things. We really can't run a business. And Santaquin City is business. It's a billion-dollar corporation. If you had to replace every one of those roads, if you had to replace or build pipes, that's billions of dollars by the time you get done with it. And we run maintenance. We work hard to take care of things. We look after our people. And through those inflated times, the cost of living has gone up. And it's a result of the inflated costs that are going on. And all we're trying to do is take care of the citizens that we have. You know, we don't pocket a penny, you know? Everything we do is for the kids, for the people of this city, and for our staff, and for our great employees, our police and fire. And, you know, did we buy two police cars? Yeah, we bought four. We utilize every bit of the money that we get. And if we don't do this, we lose out big time. Because that inflated number that was given to us through the mill levy, that if we were to follow it, we would be behind times. This tax increase is one of those things that meets the need that we need today. And that comes from all of our directors, that meet with all of the council, and we talk about the needs. Where do we need to be? What can we possibly get by with? And to just say, the one thing we're going to get out of this is, gosh, we have two firemen that will be full-time. Well, two firemen can't go on a fire truck, because it takes at least four to run a fire engine per federal law. So we are looking out for the citizens without getting into the pox. It's as deeply as you think we might be. We're really not. We're trying to run this and bring it in. There's a couple of things. It was stated that we're not business-friendly. We have brought in with this council, an eighty-four percent increase in sales tax. And that's a proven figure over what it was four years ago. And we have much more that we're working on. If we could get something that we could count on that could sustain a half of another police or fireman in the future, we would do that, and we work that way, and we're bringing that way. You think about it, all the sales tax, or all the property tax that is paid by the businesses and the citizens of this city, the property owners, amounts to about eight percent of the total budget of the whole city. That means ninety-two percent of the rest of the whole money that we need to run the city at the level that we do right now, we make up in other ways. And so, you know, I just want you to understand, we turn magic. We use some of the best people in the world. We don't pay the best wages, but we try to pay the very best that we can without getting into everybody's pockets. Dan?
Do we get any tax revenue out of the gravel pit?
We are getting tax revenue out of Sunrock. And we do get a portion out of the gravel pit. But we get it because there's a workaround, and that is, you get a business license, but your billing address is where the tax money goes, is credited to for the origination. And so, we've even met with them and said, can you move your office and office staff? And so that's where we've tried to get with that. With Sunrock, we've done that. Those are the only two that we really even work with. The Maverick Pit that's out west, if you guys want that in the city, that's a whole different ballgame. And it's not. And that's not the way it's gonna be looked at right now, because if in fact you would talk to Genola, you'd find out they really don't want anything to do with it. They don't ask for the money that they're paid in some regards. They're given that.
Is Sunrock in Santaquin City enough?
Yes.
Then why don't you enforce the dust?
Sunrock is down south.
I'm talking about Albies Oak Pit. Do you get any tax revenue from that?
It's not straight.
That's created more trouble for our town than any one thing there is. Bob, you want to connect the freeway?
Yeah. I appreciate, well, now the freeway is another thing that we worked on.
I know, I know.
Hey, we were awarded, we were awarded just this past month to be on the priority list. The new interchange and three lanes on the freeway each direction is now a done deal.
Oh, I know that.
So, there's notes that I have taken from what's been said. I want you to know, and, you know, it's not common for the mayor to just go ahead and go on about a few things, but I wanted to answer some of the questions that you have. The other thing I want to say is, my office is open, and anybody that wants to sit down and point out, hey, we want to do this, or we want you to do that, please know, I have or will have an answer to move forward with about anything that's going on. I put a lot of time in, as does all of this council. And I just am grateful that each one of you have been here tonight. We want to hear from you. We're not surprised with a lot of those responses and those questions, but we do have answers for almost everything that's been brought today. There's nothing that was a surprise to me that I can think of, but I do know there are answers for these. And the reason I don't answer most of them is I don't want to single anyone out. I just want you to know, this is what we're trying to do, make a city work. You are important. Your words are important, and I thank you for being here. So with that, and the closing of the formal public hearing, I would like to move on with the other work of the night. So, the resolutions I need to go through is, number one is oh-eight oh-one twenty-twenty-five, the adoption of the certified tax rate. Is there a question or a comment from anyone as we begin?
I'll make a comment. I want to echo, I agree with what the mayor said. I'm really impressed at this council and got brought up food trucks and different things. There's so much work that the council has done, and especially the mayor, in bringing in new businesses that generate property tax revenue and sales tax revenue. I also want to address around agritourism too, is that that's something that I believe, and I can only speak for myself, but I believe that most of the city council is supportive of. We just want to make sure that it's done in the right way, that benefits the character of the community. And I've actively talked to multiple people that own properties that are interested in that, and I'm supportive of that. So, I really, I'm just grateful to our city staff that has worked to put together the budget that we have and helped, you know, look and see where can we cut back, where can we be more efficient? And they've done that. Ryan knows I was in a budget meeting, and I speak my mind. And I said things that maybe were a little combative, but I'm grateful that our city staff is super responsive and has been super great at working with all of the council and finding ways to stretch our money and make a budget that works and that's balanced. And so I just wanted to echo, you know, what mayor said, and we're really lucky to have Dan and all that he does to bring in these businesses. And he's so proactive about things. So, I would just want to express my gratitude to the council and city staff, because that's what's making it possible for a city to run on such a tight budget.
Thank you. Anything else? Lynn?
Nope, I'm good, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Then I would call for a motion on oh-eight oh-one twenty-twenty-five.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Santaquin City Resolution zero-eight zero-one twenty-twenty-five, adoption of the final certified tax rate for Santaquin City twenty-twenty-five.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second that, mayor.
And a third?
A third.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passed. Resolution oh-eight oh-two, the adoption of the final budget that we've been working on for, what, six months? Seven months? Are there any questions on that? You've all had a chance to go through it, what, at least forty times in the last little while? Lynn, do you have any questions on the budget?
No, I'm good.
All right. Then I would ask for a motion on oh-eight oh-two twenty-twenty-five.
Mayor, I'll make them... Is Lynn gonna do it?
Lynn made a motion.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Moved and seconded. Now, because that is passed, there are three other items that we have to go through with our city in order to keep it running. One is the Community Development and Renewal Agency, the Santaquin Local Building Authority, and the Santaquin Special Service District. And I think they're in that order. And the CDRA, or the Community Development and Renewal Agency, is is the ability for Santaquin City to create an industrial park. We have, through the state law, been able to do so, built an industrial park. We have sold properties out of it. We paid for all one hundred percent of the infrastructure without anything to do with taxes. And we now have businesses going in there. We are at a positive on our money and still have a couple of lots that we're dealing with. We have made some money that we turned straight back into the city. And last month, we have been able to turn that back into this building, and especially the library, where we are able to pay for the building of that building without adding to the other costs that have gone on before us and that were set up. So, one day soon, we will have the library in this building operating with twelve thousand square feet. And so, that is a gift to this city, and it hasn't come out of our pockets to do it. So, in order to move forward with our resolutions, we have to convene as the Santaquin Community Development and Renewal Agency. Once we do that, we become a board. So all the councilmen become board members. I become the chair. So, I need a motion to go to the Santaquin CDRA.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Now, this is the establishment of the budget for the fiscal year of twenty-five, twenty-six for the CDRA. We've gone through this a bunch of times, and it's been posted. So, has anybody had a question on it? We good to move forward? Then I would ask for a motion from a member of the board.
So moved. Seconded.
Wow. It's been moved by Art, seconded by Brian. Okay. Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passed, and that is the only one we have to do. So I need a motion to leave the Santaquin CDRA and go to the, back to the business meeting.
So moved. Second.
I wish we could do that all at once. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Oh, these roll call votes drive me nuts, you know? Oh, these roll call votes drive me nuts, you know, that, jeez, whatever happened to all in favor? Okay, um, I need a motion then to go to the Santaquin Community or to the uh Santaquin Local Building Authority.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, we're now in the uh Santaquin Local Building Authority.
You need to vote on that, mayor.
Oh, yeah, forgot, got ahead of myself. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
We're now in the Santaquin Local Building Authority. So this is the building of the WRF buildings and, yeah. This is what they use to take care of the money that goes through to pay for those funds. So any questions on the funds, on the budget that we've put together that we've looked at to get to this point? There's no changes that have anything to do with the tax increase that go with any of these things, so. Uh, with with nothing, I would ask for a motion on the Santaquin Local Building Authority?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded? Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
I'd ask for a motion to leave the local building authority and go back to the meeting.
So moved.
So moved?
Moved and seconded. And either one of you wanna be the second? It don't matter. Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Oh, motion passed, can I have a a motion to go back? Was that the motion to go back?
You were in the city council meeting now, so.
Okay, yeah, thanks, somebody keep me straight on these. I used to have a list and I could just check it off and go down, but you guys don't trust me with lists anymore. Okay, Santaquin Special Service District for the water, this is where we keep our water shares. Uh, we have to pay for water shares that we're giving in water in lieu of, as well as the other shares that we hold. So we need to convene to the special Santaquin Service District that takes care of all these water shares that are from everywhere. Oh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Lynn?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
So with Special Service District, this allows us to pay for, work with those uh legalities that come with owning water and dealing with water rights and having everything that we do with the water. So uh, are there any questions with the Special Service District that we have talked about in the past? And the adoption of the final budget? Budget's good? Then I would ask for a motion to approve the budget.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, Lynn?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Motion passed. I have a motion to uh reconvene in the Santaquin City Council.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, Lynn?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
We're back in the meeting, uh, all of the all of the business has been taken care of. We are ready to adjourn. However, I wanna remember or remind everybody something or at least put this into the minutes that there were questions that were brought up and I'd like to be reminded of those questions so that I can either include them in some of the documentation that maybe as I send out the mayor's memo or something and and make sure that we address those things. Every one of those items that the people brought up, I think were very good and we have addressed in in many, many ways. And in fact, a lot of those things have even been explained with in the monthly newsletter. There there really wasn't anything too new, but uh, I am grateful that we had these people here and that they said the things that they said because we need to hear that.
And I think by by and large, the major concern with most people was dust.
Yeah, I I agree.
And mitigation of that, it's a concern for our orchard people too.
I, you know, can I ask something? Would 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 you get a report from you and John on the dust, some of the mitigation that we could maybe do? And maybe uh, let's address it a little bit more because people aren't happy. I I hear about that all the time as well. They they did put that asphalt down, I think it made a lot of difference on the road. But I don't like seeing the dust on the mountain, I don't think they spray it like they did before.
We'll we'll get, we'll bring a report back.
The the other thing I would really like to see is uh, um, is it Scott or Steve that runs it?
Steve Larson. Scott Larson.
Scott's the one that runs the canyons, okay. I wanna talk to Steve about uh that office and that billing.
We are already working on that, mayor, that's the that was the the sales tax is what you're talking about. We've actually, staff has been working on that since uh quite some time and we believe that we're making some headway with the state to bring those funds down here and and collect those from the first of the year.
I I know we talked about it and I know that even recently, in the last few weeks, we've talked about making sure that was there. But I I want it on record.
We will.
And and I just want anybody that reviews this meeting to know, we're trying to address absolutely every one of those things that were brought up, so. This is good, uh, we don't, we're not gonna go through any reports tonight. I thank you for taking time and coming on a day that's a little different to be here.
Our next meeting would be on the nineteenth then?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded, Lynn?
Aye.
Lynn? I just wanna hear if you say aye twice.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate everybody.